Stand by.
Welcome to City Council. We'll call this meeting to order. We're going to start, as usual, with our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all stand up. We have Pastor David Graham from Grace Community Church to give our invocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's pray. Gracious Father, You are the One who holds each and every one of us accountable for every thought, word, and deed. We pray tonight that You would give this council and those who speak wisdom and understanding, we ask for Your help in managing the affairs of this city. In Your name we pray, and thank You, Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. We do have one public announcement from our City Manager, Al Noella.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as it's become a custom now, we do know that from time to time there are events in our lives that we ought to celebrate and recognize as we go forward. Much like what happened almost a year ago, there were two individuals that we celebrated their birthdays. This year, unfortunately, they're not going to be able to take the stage individually. They're going to have to share again because somebody decided that there was some other personal plans that were going to get in the way from truly celebrating the birthday closer to the date of their anniversary. So with that, we do have two birthdays to celebrate. One is Mayor Pro-Tim Lovett. Unfortunately, she will not be with us next council meeting, so we're doing that tonight. And then, secondly, is Councilman McManus. So I would ask that the rest of the public join me in singing "Happy Birthday." And let's make sure that the fire chief has got the... All right. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear council members. Happy birthday.
I'm not sure I care for this tradition, you know? It's not always a pleasant reminder, but thank you.
Well, I wasn't sure why my husband was here. So were you part of this plan? I don't know why I didn't get a kiss because Warren got one.
What a challenge. He's still in his seat.
All right. Well, congratulations to both of you.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, I did a lot more than you.
Another year wiser.
I didn't bought one, too. Oh, this is so cool. Well, thank you very much.
All right. We next have our initial public comment period devoted to agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item? Glenn, please.
My name is Glenn Fain. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little thing, on the consent agenda, on item seven, just the way its word is kind of little, I'm not sure what you guys are trying to do. And all I'm asking is if, I don't know if you can or not how you're going to do it, but maybe before you vote on it, on the consent agenda, maybe just clarify a little bit better than what it's written, or if you have to wait to move it to the regular agenda where you can talk about it. That's all. It's just kind of ambiguous. Moratorium on what part of the rate? Are we just not going to have any rates for them? Are we going to raise them or are we going to lower them? Just not quite sure. If you'd just maybe explain a little bit before you vote on it or move it to the regular agenda where you can talk about it in whatever way is appropriate to handle it at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Free utilities for nine months. That's...I like that. Judy.
Judy DeShane. I just want to, it's really just a comment, and I'm not expecting an answer, so don't worry about that. But I could, item number four on the consent agenda. I read everything, and that was, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. It's items five and six, I guess it is. Four and five, that's it. It's the paint of the power, water and power building, painting that, and then the whale and field fixing the backstops or whatever it is. You can tell I don't play ball. At any rate, when you read the backup on it, it says, you know, you're adjusting the budget for, one is $35,000, the other one was $50,000. But in both cases, it sounds like it's coming from the budget funds for the fire department and for Public Works. And so it just is kind of confusing, maybe if, understand why is it coming from those two funds? Because that's 85, a total of like $85,000 that's moving from those two funds to do these other two projects that apparently weren't, didn't have enough money in the budget initially to get them done. So, thank you.
Thank you. We can get our Public Works Director to get with you afterwards if you like. Others?
I just want to thank you very much for finally making an effort to paint our wonderful building. I go in there two or three times a week, and I'm looking forward to a fresh coat of paint, and hopefully it'll be soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we'll close our initial public comment period, and we will move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Come back to Council for approval?
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I will say, too, before we move to approval of the consent agenda, that Councilman Harhey was not able to join us tonight. He was going to try to telephone in. He's still dealing with some health issues, and we just wanted to make sure he was trying, but he's excused tonight. So next is our approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Staff is recommending that we remove item number six, please.
Okay. Remove as in moving it to the regular agenda or taking it off completely?
I think Councilmember McNabb just wanted to move one, but we're just recommending remove item six and then move it to the council box.
Mr. City Manager?
No other further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Okay. Council?
I am requesting item seven be moved to the regular agenda for additional discussion.
Okay.
Move for approval with those changes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. I didn't see any fourth graders tonight. We do have one gentleman. Are you from high school? All right. Good deal. So tomorrow morning, we have our Boulder City High School seniors doing their mock city council. We're looking forward to that and want to welcome you tonight. Why don't you go ahead and stand up so cameras can see you, and appreciate you being here. All right. And then, so we are on to our regular agenda. We'll go ahead and start out with the item number seven that was moved from the consent agenda. Mr. Har, or Mr. McManus?
Again, the question I had on this was, in our last meeting, as we were discussing this, the potential impacts of the delay of this or the moratorium that we're looking at, do we have any figures or estimates on the amount of revenue that is not going to be realized as a result of the moratorium?
So we did, I'm sorry, Councilman McManus, yes, or Dennis Porter, Utilities Director, we did run those numbers for each of the utilities. And so with regards to water, that projected loss for that six-month period is approximately $500,000. The projected loss, and this is for FY '20, the projected loss in the sewer fund is about $84,000. And the projected lot in electric, which is the main one, is a little over $1.1 million. If you continued with that moratorium longer than that period, then obviously that would exacerbate.
Okay. And again, I want to be clear about the wording on this because I also had a question about exactly which rates are going to be delayed or put off until January 1. Which increases?
So it's a little different, but the reality is that the way the moratorium is written is that as any rate increase that was going to go into effect on July 1st would be moved to January 1 of 2020.
And again, I don't know...
So that includes the electric rates. And there was no increases on the service charges on electric, so I didn't do anything with that. But there was increases on the rates themselves, the commodity side. And then with regards to water and sewer, that 2.5% would have applied to rates as well as the service charges.
Okay. The resolution refers to the business electric. So again, I just want to confirm that when you talk about the million-plus that won't be collected from the residents, that there was no rate increase scheduled for the electric for residential?
There was, there was a small increase on the commodity itself, but not on the basic service charge. So that, again, would move to January 1 on that small increase.
Okay. And again, you know, the wording of the, what's in the packet seems to refer to the business electric rather than all electric.
And I would have to defer to Steve.
I thought, so, again, I'm not sure that there's any, so what the resolution covers is that Boulder City utility rates will remain at their current rates, so there will be no increases across the board for any of them that may have become effective July 1, 2019. So this is, this is a broad resolution in that regard, that any rate that would have been escalated during that time period, the moratorium is in effect until January 1, 2020. And again, which, which rates would have had an escalator or would have gone up, I'd have to defer to, to our Utilities Director. I'm not sure in that regard, but this resolution, it's broad. It covers any of them that would have occurred during that time period.
Okay. And again, specifically what I'm referring to is under the action requested, adoption of this resolution placing a moratorium on business electric and residential water and sewer utility rates until January 1, 2020. But I understand the wording of the resolution itself...
The wording, the resolution itself is what's binding. That's what the council would be approving tonight if, if they, if the council votes in favor of this resolution.
Okay. And again, I don't know if that was what had caused the confusion for Mr. Fain, but I noticed that, too, that it didn't seem to relate to all of the potential increases.
Perhaps, and I can see that in the staff report itself. It does reference that, but the, the resolution that will be passed is all-encompassing.
All right. Thank you.
And the numbers, the numbers calculated were all-encompassing.
All right. And again, for the revenue that will not be collected, do you foresee that impacting any of the capital improvement projects that were scheduled for FY 1920?
There will be some that will probably be moved out for, until we come to a resolution, specifically with regards to the water and the sewer. There are a couple of projects that we can move out that are, have less risk associated with them. And then again, of course, the big one that really starts to get impacted sooner in a larger way is on the electric side. And so we're looking at those projects that we can, you know, kind of move around and push one or two of those out to cover that $1.1 million deficit, if you will.
All right. Any other factors that you believe are involved in doing this moratorium?
I guess I'm not quite understanding your question as far as...
I'm not the expert.
Are you asking impacts to the utility overall or...?
Yes. I mean, we're not going to be laying off any employees or we're not endangering our ability to pay for the power that we purchase or the water.
I think the way I would couch the answer towards that is that, and I hate to go back a few years, but when we go back to the original intent of the rate study and from what I could review in the, in the city council meetings at the time, back in 2015 and 2016, the idea was, was clearly to try to make those funds self-sufficient. And so from the Utility Director's perspective, there are things we do know. We know construction costs are going up. We know operation and maintenance costs are going up. We know we have a capital plan we have to address. And so the concern we would have would be just the fact that you push those rate increases off just pushes some of those challenges down the road a little bit, certainly until we have a better answer when the rate study's done. So preferably, you know, I would say I'd stick with my staff report that I provided, that we wouldn't want to necessarily do that.
In reference to that 2015 rate study report, were there any projections in that report as to the amount of reserve that was projected at this time? We're now four years after the study was done. Were there any goals in that report as far as the amount of reserves we were trying to get to?
I can't speak directly to the number that they set for the reserves. They did, they did have a reserve policy that they built into the rate study and the rate calculations and the revenue requirements. They also did not include a significant amount of transfers in because the philosophy at the time was to try to wean, was to make those funds self-sufficient.
And the, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if we're looking at the amount of revenue we're taking in now, was there a target in that 2015 study that said you want to get to X number of dollars for your revenue inflow? Or were they just saying, well, here are some increased levels that you can work towards and...
So they, they made very specific assumptions with regards to the criteria in increases in water costs, increases in power costs, increases in labor on the operating side, and they used all those in their projections by fiscal year. And then what really drove most of the rates was they had a capital plan, obviously, they built into the, the rate structure and the rate increases that were proposed at the time in order to satisfy those revenue requirements.
Those hard costs you just referred to, again, do we know where those are at today in relation to what they were projecting in 2015? What I'm trying to get at is, did they hit the mark? In other words, when they were making their estimates, were they low or high, or are we...
So I can tell you this, they didn't, they didn't anticipate some of those funds from the solar leases. So those funds would be added to what was included in the rate study. But as far as the actual numbers, I don't have those at with me.
Well, and again, what I'm trying to get at, and I'm not trying to pin you down necessarily on specific numbers, is when we do something like this, the impact then is more, you're saying there could be projects in the future that are impacted. We're not destabilizing any of our utility funds as far as their actual operation at this time.
On the operation side, not, certainly not for the six months.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. If not, I will move to approve Resolution Number 6931.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is item number nine, consideration of Bill 1848, an agreement between the city and the Clark County Regional Flood Control District. Mr. Armantra.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Brock Armantra, your contracts real estate manager. This is an amendment to Agreement 18-1768 that was entered into last spring between the city and the Clark County Flood Control District for the communications equipment that's up on top of Red Mountain. At the time, both parties had intended to absorb into that agreement another agreement that was going to expire shortly for the weather collection equipment. Both parties were so obsessed with making sure this agreement was right, it got overlooked. So this amendment corrects that deficiency and adds in to the legal description and narrative that the agreement also includes the weather collection equipment that's located on Red Mountain, and also allows for the equipment to be relocated upon approval by the city's real estate officer, which is our finance director. Purpose for that is, from time to time, different locations may yield more accurate weather results, and so that's why we have that language in the agreement. The Board of, whoever controls the Board for the Flood Control District is also approving this concurrently with this action. So staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Not, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval, Bill Number 1848. Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number 10 is a temporary suspension of Council's Rules of Procedure to change the date of our June 11th city council meeting. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The Council's Rules of Procedure state that meetings are to be held on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, with the exception of December and July. As you know, the general election falls on the first council meeting in June after the legislative change a few years ago. So we're requesting that the Council suspend their Rules of Procedure to change the date of the council meeting to the Monday prior. So change the regular council meeting from June 11th to June 10th, same time at 7:00 PM, please.
All right. Unless there's discussion, I'll go ahead and move for approval of that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have appointment to the allotment committee, item number 11. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. The allotment committee is comprised of seven at-large members that serve two-year terms. The committee does not, only meets on an as-needed basis. The terms of Kirsten Kelso, Julie Murray, and Shawna Rudd have all expired, and we need to draw three names from the volunteers that submitted their applications in the jar. This is the only committee that's drawn by lot per our charter. And so I'm requesting that three names be drawn to serve a term expiring June 30, 2020, please.
All right. I'll let you each draw a name. So we have Kevin Tibbs, Shawna Rudd, and Kirsten Kelso. One of the loneliest jobs in all of Boulder City. But we appreciate their service nonetheless. Thank you. Item number 12, Boulder City Police Department's Annual Report. I have Chief Timothy Shade to give us that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Shade, the Chief of Police. And this is the first of two briefings you'll get from me from this year. This briefing consists of crime statistics, as reported to the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting Program, and some activity numbers that are defined under our Computer Data Dispatching or CAD-COS. I'm going to try to condense this as much as I can. I promised the City Manager I'd be brief, but you know, as Irish with the gift of gab, so I'll do the best I can. But I thought it'd be beneficial for you to understand what these areas mean because the Uniform Crime Reporting Program has its own definitions of what the crimes are, and they don't match up with state statutes. So like for what's a burglary in Nevada, may not be a burglary in California or Oregon or Utah. It's different, every different state. So what they did is they had to develop a standardized definition, so they were comparing likes to likes. Unfortunately, UCR is on its way out. It's not 100% accurate. In many states, a lot of agencies don't, don't report. Nevada is one of the states that 100% of the agencies do report, but some states is as low as 35%. So you're not required to report. It's being replaced by a system called NIBERS. That's Incident, National Incident-Based Reporting System. It's supposed to go into effect in January 2021, and we've been selected as one of the test sites for Nevada. It was supposed to start May 1st, but the feds pushed it back to August. So again, UCR does not track all the activity of a law enforcement agency. It facts, it only tracks a minority of what police agencies do across the country, and it's broken down into two areas, violent crimes and property crimes. Oops, you're ahead of me. So this is the UCR-track data for our city going back to 2002. And if you note, 2018 is preliminary data. The FBI hasn't published the final data for 2018. I really don't expect any changes. Under the violent crime, UCR tracks four crimes, murder, to include non-negligent manslaughter, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. So the Uniform Crime Reporting System defines murder and non-negligent manslaughter as the willful, non-negligent killing of one human being by another. What's unique about this is the classification for this offense is based solely on the police investigation, as opposed to a determination of a court or a medical examiner, a coroner, or jury, or judicial body. So if we investigate a case as an assault, and it gets changed, for example, by the prosecutor because the person dies to murder or homicide, it doesn't get reflected here. It's based solely on the way the police did their investigation. And the UCR program does not include deaths called by negligent, suicide, or accident, justifiable homicides, or attempts to murder, or, those are carried under aggravated assault. So it's a real, real narrow definition, and things get fairly skewed. The crime of rape also changed significantly. In 2013, they completely changed their definition. Up until that time, the only rapes that were listed were, their definition was forcible carnal knowledge of a female. That was it. Nothing else could be included. Now it's been broadened out significantly to include males and females and a whole host of activities that aren't forcible. And what's not included in here, though, are statutory rape or incest. Those crimes are not included in rape. We would handle them that way. It's not reported that way. The FBI defines robbery as taking or attempting to take anything of value from the care, custody, or control of a person or persons by force or threat of force or violence, or by putting the victim into fear. People often confuse robbery with burglary or other crimes. So say my house got robbed, or I was out last night and I got robbed. The only way to get robbed is for someone to come up and threaten you with a weapon or to directly take it from you or control, like snatching your purse or something like that. But unless they're directly confronted and force is used with a weapon, or they're put into fear of their life, it's not robbery. Aggravated assault. Aggravated assault does not cover a majority of the assault cases handled by law enforcement. It's defined here as an unlawful attack by one person upon another for the purpose of inflicting severe or aggravated bodily injury. It says assault is usually accompanied by the use of a weapon or by other means likely to produce death or great bodily harm. So it doesn't include things like we see in a lot of domestics where someone might get slapped or punched or kicked or something like that. It basically, it's an attempt to somebody who's really trying to injure somebody grievously, seriously, put him in the hospital or kill him. That's the only one the FBI tracks. Under property crimes, they only track burglary, larceny, auto theft, and arson. And burglary is very narrow, much more narrow than the states. For burglary, it's only the unlawful entry... For burglary, it's only the unlawful entry of a structure to commit a felony or theft. In Nevada, if you go into someone's house to punch them in the nose, it's a burglary. Under the federal thing, it is not. And to classify an offense as a burglary, the use of force or gain entry doesn't need to happen, but the UCR does have a subcon area for non-force entry. Their definition of a structure includes an apartment, barn, horse, house trailer, or houseboat when used as a permanent dwelling, office, or railroad car. Doesn't include automobiles, or things such as that. The Nevada statute does. So, that's why our burglary rates look different when you see the CAD reports versus what it says in UCR, because our UCR reports have to meet the state standard. And the state standard is, a person who enters by day or night, any house, room, apartment, tenant, shop, warehouse, store, mill, barn, stable, outhouse, or other building, tent, vessel, vehicle, and it goes on and on. So, you can see why the statutes are so, or why our stats don't always match up. Larceny theft is the unlawful carrying, leading, or riding away, of course, a property from the possession or constructive possession of another. It doesn't include forgeries, check fraud, identity theft, things like that. It's not included in the federal statute, but it's included in our CAD statutes. The UCR definition of motor vehicle theft is a theft or attempted theft of motor vehicle. And they, their classification of motor vehicle is much, much more strict than what the states is. So, again, our figures don't. But they match up with everybody else's. So, Henderson's, North Las Vegas, Los Angeles Police Department, the same definitions apply. And arson is the willful or malicious burning, or attempting to burn, with or without intent to defraud a dwelling, house, public building, motor vehicle, aircraft. As the fire chief will tell you, the state statute is much broader, and even includes grass in Nevada. Do you have any questions about the data up there? As you can see, things have changed from 2002 and 2003, luckily, and for theft, we're down significantly. Burglaries were a high of 147 in 2004. This year, they're up slightly to 56, which has dropped off significantly from where they were. A lot more alarms, people locking their houses up, taking care of each other, surveillance cameras, and it's not as profitable as burglary as it used to be.
Chief, one question I have on those numbers. When you mentioned the distinctions between the federal and the state, what does that do for your record-keeping? Do you have to keep essentially two different sets of books to do the reporting?
Right. We have, our statistical data that is in the state line, and then the UCR stats, and every agency has to do this. The UCR reporting is a special report that's sent in to the FBI for the things that they track. And there's a lot more than just this that they track. There's a whole, the Crime of the United States is the name of the document that comes out every year. It's a big book about this thing. And it tracks everything for every law enforcement agency around the corner, be it UNLV police, be it us, be it, it's got tons and tons. Federal government likes to have data, and they have tons of data in there. This slide, whoops, this slide shows the UCR stats for the first quarter of this year, and what's happened in the city. And this is 2017 data. Again, the FBI hasn't put out the 2018, but the blue is us. These are crimes per 100,000 people. So, if we had 100,000 people, this is where we would line up. Orange is Nevada, and gray is the national average. As you see, we're fortunate that we are below Nevada, which is higher than the national average in all of those categories. So, we're an anomaly for the state of Nevada. We're below everything. And for the past few years, we come out as the number-one area for livability when it comes to crime index, as the safest city in Nevada, based on this data. This slide shows some of the CAD data events for last year that our personnel routinely handled in 2018. It's significantly more than the eight areas captioned in the UCR. These are only 42 of about 130 different CAD areas that we locate that in here. You say, and many of these take more than one officer. So, you say, well, how much time is spent here? So, some things take, you can say, well, disabled vehicle, that's not very bad. Depends on where it's at. Sometimes it takes two guys, they're up there for an hour of trying to get a truck out of the way. So, when you look at all this data, you say, well, here's 42 areas. This is what occurs in 365 days. And this is, so, there was 5,337 traffic stops, or traffic events. And you start adding those up, you can see our folks keep fairly busy, and if you believe in the theory, American theory of omnipresence, omnipresence, I mean, cops are out doing something, a crook never knows we're coming around the corner. It keeps crime down. So, even it looks like they're not doing something, they really are. Even in a restaurant.
Even in a doughnut shop?
We don't, bran muffins and lattes now. So, that's all the data I have. If you have any questions or specific things about this data, UCR stats are what they are. I prefer to look at the CAD data and what really is going on. So, I comb through those, and I look for areas that we should take a look at and work on. I use the CAD data. UCR is just too narrow, and the definitions don't match with the state.
Thank you for your report. Questions or comments, Mr. McMath?
Question that I had during my staff meeting yesterday is to get this data more available to our residents. I know that it was said that it's expensive, perhaps. It does sound, though, like your UCR data, which is the national data, is that correct?
Correct.
That's in a format, then, that all agencies reuse to report, if they report.
You're talking about crime mapping. So, one of the things on crime mapping, which I think is a great tool, and I'd really like to have, I've talked to the editor of the paper a couple times about it. So, as we started looking into how we would make this all work, we ran into a little bit of a stumbling block. Unlike the other agencies in the valley here, our CAD RMS system will not send the data to those companies in a format that they will use. So, and our system is run through DPS. So, we're looking for a workaround. We've tried to work with workaround, either something, and I don't know this IT thing very well, called a Crystal Report. So, the data would come from our system into a Crystal Report, then we'd shove the data to the company. The other thing we're looking at is trying to replicate what Henderson did. Henderson's IT department wrote their own program, and they didn't go with the company. So, we're looking at our VC3 folks and our GIS folks here to see if we can replicate that, because that's a tool I'd love to have out there. And what it'll do is it'll take our data dumps from our calls, pick out certain areas, they'll redact some information, so it won't say there was a domestic at 2515 A Street. It'll say 2500 Block of A disturbance, and things like that. So, Ruby's working on that now. I would love to have it in place. If we can do it internally, I think the cost will be minimal. Some of the expenses, we were told originally from some of these companies, was a $10,000 hookup fee, and then some would charge so much a month, others wouldn't, they had other ways to get paid for. So, I'm trying to do it free first, and if we can't, then see what we can do to make it happen. I think it's a good thing. I think it should happen.
How does our system of reporting match up with Henderson's? Are they apples and oranges?
Yes. We, they all have a different CAD RMS system. The city opted out of that system and bought a different one many, many, many years ago, and it's run on a different format, different company. And when the data comes out, the companies cannot, will not accept the data in that format. So, we'd have to change the format somehow into one they can accept. But it's not, we don't own Spelman, well, that's the companies we're using. We don't own it. So, it's, we're working on it. It's just not as easy as it sounds. IT stuff never is.
Well, I worked in IT, and it's sometimes easy and sometimes not so easy.
Well, for me, I turn my computer on, I'm happy. If it doesn't work, I have no idea what's wrong with it.
If it beeps too much, there's something wrong.
But I agree, it's something we, I would love to do. I wish we had it up and running already. I think it's a great tool, and my goal is to get it up and going as soon as we possibly can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? We appreciate the report. I agree that, you know, at least we should get out the highlights on the crime and the lack thereof in Boulder City. I know I get to do that in my annual State of the City, but it'd be good to do a press release, and, because we do have top-notch public safety services here in Boulder City. We should celebrate that.
And I'd have to say, too, a lot of the credit really, I'd love to take the credit, but a lot of credit goes to the citizens themselves, and the way they take care of each other here is unique. And it's been refreshing to be here. My partner and I talk about this frequently. So, the citizens should be giving themselves a pat on the back.
And I think, too, that's a benefit of the web-based mapping, that folks, if they know that, you know, maybe there's been some break, car break-ins in their neighborhood, you know, maybe it will trigger them to keep an eye out for that type of thing.
We are doing a finger-in-the-dikehole thing right now. We're taking the data that we can download in the format that we can use, and we're shoving it out through Lisa, and it's going online as best as we can do. We just don't have the map system, but we're trying to get something out at least as frequent as we possibly can. And then, when the system gets in place, hopefully, it'll auto-update every 24 hours. That's our goal.
All right.
We'll get there.
Thank you, Chief. All right. We have our final public comment, period. Anyone wishing to get final public comment? Glenn.
Glenn Fan, good evening again. I just want to say thank you for clarifying Number 7 before you've all voted on it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Claudia.
I just wanted to say thank you to our really good police department here. Even though a weird thing happened the other night, and a neighbor who ended up getting very upset because somebody else thought he was petting the lions in his front yard, and he wrote a critical letter to the editor, I do want to say I'm very grateful that there are neighbors reporting incidents in our community, and that the police do respond to it quickly. It was an unfortunate event, but I'm still grateful that it happened so quickly, because if there was somebody standing in my front yard and somebody called, I'd want to know somebody would be there right away to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Judy.
Judy DeShane, something I forgot when I asked about the other things. The other thing I would like to see is, it was Item 8, the sharing with the court systems. Reading the whole thing, it says everything's going to be shared and whatever, but I think it'd be nice to know what the percentages are. How much is us? How much is them? What do we have to do wholly? That's the cities, and what is strictly the county? I'm just thinking it would be nice to know what things are costing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can get the city attorney with you after, if you'd like, on that. The MOU is just an understanding to work on those things, and so we don't even, that's kind of for future cost sharing. We're going to be working on that with the county. Okay. Others? All right. We'll close public comment and move to our city council reports. Councilwoman Levitt.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of things. I wanted to congratulate the chamber on their very successful Spring Jam. In my opinion, it's the best one we've ever had. It was larger than it's ever been, and the Outdoor Expo, or whatever they call it, was very successful. I talked to many people who had similar feelings, that this was the most successful event that they've had. And I also wanted to comment on Historic Preservation Day. I thought it was excellent, and even though I've lived in Boulder City or worked here since 1974, I'd never been in the Bureau of Reclamation, so it was nice to have that opportunity. And I'd never been in the old airport hangar before, although I certainly had been on that property, but I hadn't actually been in the hangar. So, it gave me the opportunity to do that. But for me, the highlight of the day was the presentation at the Boulder City High School with people kind of reenacting stories about residents that had lived here in the 1930s. And so, it was just excellent. It was so well-done, and I appreciate the Historic Preservation Committee and others who participated in putting that day together.
Thank you. Mr. McManus.
Following on that theme, I spent most of that day at the water filtration plant. Again, the number of visitors there was 117 people. I think each of the five or six times the plant has been open, we've exceeded 100 people going through there. The, I agree with Councilwoman Levitt, that the work that people put into the high school presentations, I especially wanted to point out the Daughters of the American Revolution, who had done a tribute to Ida Browder, I think also put on a very good performance. Nice to see that building perhaps getting back into use. And following on the historic theme, the History and Arts Foundation will, it just completed a play at the filtration plant a couple of weeks ago. It was a sell-out, very successful. They will also be doing the auction for the roof tiles that were salvaged on the filtration plant that artists from our local art guild and others have done. If you haven't seen that, I believe the preview is Friday at the American Legion, and then Saturday will be the auction. Some very interesting pieces of work. It's amazing how creative these artists were with those roof tiles. And lastly, I'll say, I believe the kids are getting out of school here pretty soon, so woo-hoo, it's summertime.
Mr. Shammann. All right. Well, lots going on in our city, and in addition to what's already been said about Spring Jam and Historic Preservation Day, great, great events. Appreciate city staff, again, for all the hard work you put into putting those together, and cleaning up afterwards, and things like that. A lot of work behind the scenes. Historic Preservation Day, there are many, many volunteers involved in that, and wanted to give a shout-out to Alan Goya, who is in, was in the hospital. I think he might be out now, but he unfortunately couldn't go to that, but he put a lot of hours in just organizing the different groups and the volunteers to get that going. And it was a great event. There was also the Hospital Gala, their annual fundraiser on Saturday night, I think, and the honorees were Dr. Robert and Lori Merrill, and it was another wonderful event. And the auctioneers this year were our own Chief Kevin Nicholson and Doug Shetman, wearing their cowboy hats and gear, and it was a lot of fun to watch that and to be a part of it. And so, more events coming in the coming weeks. Appreciate all of you being involved in our city and for coming out tonight, and we'll adjourn this meeting until next time. Thank you.
I forgot to mention the Dillinger Block Party.
Dillinger Block Party, too.